Ready?
Yes.
I call this meeting of the Mount Barton Independent School District to order. Like the record showed, that a corp of board members is present. And this meeting has been newly called and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. So the record showed Aaron and Leanne are both absent today. Everybody's had a chance to look at the agenda, I guess.
Yes.
The motion to certify the agenda. Segmented by Scott. All those who certified the agenda? Five oh. Robert, you can do this first.
Lord, we come to you today to thank you for your grace and the many blessings that you give us today. We also ask that you be with the students, the staff, and employees of the district as we get closer to starting another school year. Help them use the time left to re-energize and prepare for a great school year. Now enter our hearts and minds as we make decisions today on the business before us and that these decisions will have a positive impact on our district. For here is where we fall short of these and help us be alighted of others. These things I ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor of the Texas way, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
There's no one signed up for it.
No, sir.
If anybody's here.
Nobody will.
I guess we'll move on to our public hearing on the S.R. Funds Allocation. Chandler's gonna do that for us, I think.
Do you want to get to do it or you gonna stand right there?
I'm standing right here. You got a line, I'm gonna stand right here. So you have two pieces of paper in front of you. Also, in board book, I'm gonna start with S.R. Three Funds. Dr. McCullough and Pam have talked to you about the federal funds that are coming into school districts, S.R. Two and S.R. Three. So we have several requirements of utilizing S.R. Three Funds as far as public comment and opportunity for the public to give input. We also held a site-based meeting with our district improvement committee and kind of rolled out some ideas. We looked at student achievement and got input to see if they could share anything with us on additional ways to utilize S.R. Three Funds. So what you have in front of you is our tentative planning for how we're gonna utilize S.R. Three. So S.R. Three is allocated at 2,826,641. We are going to focus on two years, even though we can roll into that third year and we have some carryover, but to avoid any expenditure issues for Pam to be able to do expenditure reporting, we're going to roll the funds for '21, '22, and '22, '23. That way, if we have any carryover, we've got a little fluke room for maybe fall '23, '24. Okay? So out of S.R. Three Funds, there were some caveats that we had to work with. So 20% of this money has to go towards learning loss. And that was a pretty vast, I wanna say, description that it gave us. So in other words, we know students have had learning loss. We know that there are students that are still struggling in content. So school districts spend 20% of this funds over the course of that grant on things like accelerated instruction, intervention programs, summer school, before-school, after-school tutorials, tutoring, hiring tutors. So a lot of that was encompassing that. So in other words, we want this focus to be on student learning and loss of learning. The remaining 80%, then, could fit within the activities that were allowed, and a lot of those activities had to do with any kind of COVID-related. The other big one that I'm hearing a lot of districts do is their HVAC systems, their air purification, how they're sanitizing and cleaning their buildings. So that was a lot of these technologies, again, to make sure that if we rolled remote, where was our technology? Did we have access to those things? So districts kind of are going all over the place on that 80%, as long as it could get one of the activities available on the grant, again, which was pretty broad, as long as you had justification. So what you have in front of you is kind of, again, just to lay out year one and year two for learning loss. So under learning loss intervention time, this would support teachers who are utilizing that intervention time during that school day. So at the secondary and elementary, elementary, we call it tiger time still in Lincoln, like your Honda, that RTI time, that teachers, and when I say this, core teachers, not intervention as to that's what they do full-time. And then at the secondary level, we have that time built in the day that we are focused. So this is focused intervention time, not just tutoring, not making up a test, but those teachers who are really focusing on that. So that is kind of set up for that additional time spent. Supplemental programs, that can be online learning programs and supplemental programs that students have access to here as well as access at home on devices that they could be utilizing. Out-of-school tutorials, so that would be any time that we have a teacher before school or after school that is working with students, that we will compensate them for that time. Again, structured time, there's a sign-in sheet to support that time. Summer school, that has been an area we've really struggled, just to kind of have a summer school. The state's putting a ton of pressure on us to really make sure that your summer school is enrichment as well as acceleration. In other words, that should be a time for students to really focus on instant learning. So that is for staffing for that. Professional development, so that would be bringing in region A consultants or outside consultants who are working with our classroom teachers specifically. The year one, 80%. Pam has talked to me, I don't want to speak out of turn for her, so please jump in, if you need to add in. On the salary coverage, so this little number right here, as you know, as we've been looking at budget, S.R. Three will definitely help float us for the next two years of our local funds to allow us that time to hopefully get a moment up. That's our hope, is that kids come back to school, kids that went homeschool, that didn't, kindergartners that didn't start that could've started. So we kind of have this two-year window that S.R. Three is going to be supplanting local monies to full salaries. We made some great decisions and thank you for that, for the salary increases that teachers taught, paraprofessionals, staff across the board. And so with that really being competitive with sale, scale, excuse me, this will help flow us. So that is that made case. Facilities, and again, I'll have Dr. McCullough chime in if I miss anything. This is for Bobby Thompson, and that is specifically air conditioning HVAC systems, based on kind of ideal impact working, and we know that we've got some structural things to do. Technology, then Anthony Ilerz, what we did was we looked at the what-if. We've talked a lot about, are we ready if we needed to go one-to-one? We wanted to move one-to-one. Do we have devices that are currently in licensing that they haven't expired? What happens a lot of times in school districts is we do this great job of getting devices and we do a horrible job of maintaining the rotation of those devices. Devices age. They age out, licenses expire. So what this will do in year one as well as year two is that make sure that our rotation, that we have all licensed current active devices, so any devices that have aged out that are generation ones that have become obsolete, that we have fully licensed again. Teacher attendance and staff retention, this is one that we were super excited about. Give full props to Dr. McCullough. I gave him a hard time, I don't give him a lot of good ideas. He throws stuff at me, I'm like, "That's horrible! No!" Hate it. This was excellent, I loved this. He rolled this at site-based, so we got input there and super excited. So what this amount will cover is an attendance incentive for teaching staff only. So again, what we know when we look at student achievement is the number-one factor is are they in front of a qualified teacher? Subs don't do it. And so what kind of incentive can we give teachers when it gets hard? And as a teacher, sometimes it's, that wellness day's looking really good. That day, Canton, may be helping me out a little bit. So we ran an incentive last year, but what we found in kind of Pam and I running it was kind of a one-and-done. So as a mom, as, you know, when I was a mom, I'm still a mother, with three kids in school and I'm teaching, well, it was like, crap, I'm out of big money because I've had an absence. And so you kind of lose that momentum. So Dr. McCullough was like, "What about a monthly one?" And teachers loved it, that were in site-based. So what this will entail during the fall, if you have zero absences as a classroom teacher, you get $100. In the spring, if you have zero absences per month, you get $200. So a teacher has the opportunity to get $1,500 not missing. But the benefit of that is for teachers who have kids or just get sick, you're not out. It's like, okay, I did get it this month, but I've still got next month. So it gives them incentive that, hey, I don't need to take that day. I'd rather have $100. So we're hoping that that, just a little enticement, especially in the spring when it's so busy, when we have so many students and staff out during that time. So that is also embedded in here. The other thing is retention, the retention piece of it. You're gonna see a lot of school districts roll out a retention stipend with their S.R. Money. And a conversation that Pam and Dr. McCullough and I had was, as you know, we had the same thing happen with the COVID stop-in. All the staff starts talking, "What are we gonna do? What are we gonna do?" Well, I go to church with so-and-so down the street and their school's doing blah-blah-blah. So we knew that we needed to have possibly something kind of ready to roll if we decided to do that and we had that already budgeted. So this is actually budgeted with a $500 stipend, retention stipend, if you as a board determine that that's how you want to utilize those S.R. Funds. So that is set up for that. And then the air purification sanitation, that is a three-year commitment, so going into that, we've already allocated that in year one. So going into year two, you're going to see the same, same type of expenditures, except for technology, we have a lot of devices aging out in year two, which is why that number is so large. So a bulk of that will go towards student devices during that time. So that is the proposed plan. Again, this was kind of a accumulation through site-based as well. So any questions? Questions from the audience, they were in site-based and saw this?
So on the air purification, that you're talking about, that $90,000, that's just for year one?
No.
If that $3,000 is the total.
And that is, so what that is, that's a proposal right now that is not getting, that's not entered into yet. What it is, it is a system we have, we currently have some of the backpack, small gun type misters that are ready to kill 99.9% of everything, then you spray it on or whatever. But in doing so, we have to have people who will be doing that. What this system is, we work with a company, actually KLC, Regard, who does our videos and door locks, our door access points, things like that, that has now come, probably actually the road lock, that they're rolling out that will do this, and they are looking and doing it. The price is pretty high under Regard to buy one yourself, but they're looking to try to do it through a co-op of schools where they have the person, and so after hours they come into a school and it can cover lots of square footage in a small amount of time and do the same thing. So we, again, we budgeted there, we've not, we've not spent, or committed ourselves to do, you have to, morning and night.
But that's the total cost.
Yes, for a three-year, yes.
Right, for the three, yes.
Any other questions on S.R. Three? What kind of the tentative plan of what we're looking at?
Okay, the next thing you have in front of you is ESSA Funds. These are federal monies that we get every school year. We have been budgeting those for several years and so on. It used to be under, much less behind, and we moved to ESSA. So right now, this is the allocation for ESSA Funds. These numbers decreased based on our enrollment decreasing. So what that means is then we have to really look to make sure on the payroll side, who's being covered on that and how we're utilizing those funds. ESSA Funds are supplemental funds, so they are meant to be in supplement. We cannot supplant, meaning that if it's a state directive, we're required in law to do it in education code, I cannot use ESSA money for that. It is strictly to supplement programs. Title I I love because it has the ability to add strategies that the campuses have on their comprehensive needs assessment through their campus improvement plan as well as our district improvement plan. So Title I's probably the most open as far as how we can utilize those funds. Title II and Title IV are a little bit more restrictive. So right now, the Title I money dropped $29,361 going into this next school year, and almost all of that money is intervention teachers. So when you see payroll, that is actually our intervention teachers at the elementary as well as intervention staff. That also covers Miss Whitehurst's technology at the elementary, and so that is a bulk of that because that is for our most needed level of intervention, that covers that. The professional contracted services piece of that is actually region eight services. So when we do that big service agreement contract, that's actually a percentage of that goes towards those contracted services. And then supplies and materials that we have allocated for that is, again, intervention materials. So working in intervention through our response intervention program, anything that is on there, or it can also be used on anything that the campuses have a strategy on their comprehensive needs assessment on their improvement plan to use. So again, that was a reduction on that. Title II is designed to recruit and retain and support teachers. That means professional development, professional development and travel, if we get a book study, and bringing in consultants as well as stop-ins to retain staff. So you can see on there, that is $55,000 that we get on federal money on that. That's a reduction of $1,715 this year. Bulk of that, again, is going towards stop-ins. That covers our bilingual teacher stop-ins as well as our Spanish teacher stop-ins on that. Then our Title II, we have allocated professional contracted services, that is outside consulting through, again, region A or an outside math consultant that comes in and that is direct consulting to teachers. Then allocate just some for supplies and materials if there is professional development materials or a book or something that they're wanting to utilize for teachers or a team, we have that allocated. The $6,400 other cost is travel. So that is what compensates, like when my math teachers want to go to camp, if we have science teachers that want to go to something. So that actually is what covers that additional staff development beyond campus budgets to allow. TCPA is a big one when we send teachers, that's pretty expensive and that allows us to supplement some staff travel. Title IV, Title IV, probably the most restrictive as far as it was designed for safe schools and student wellness. What a lot of school districts do is what we call funds transfer from Title IV into another. We do that here. So we actually transfer all of the funds that we receive for Title IV into Title I, which allows me to use that life Title I money. So, but I still have to keep it under the correct fund code, which is why it's allocated on this side. So there's no payroll coming out of that, and that is truly covering those region eight contracted services as well, which is why that big number is sitting there. And then supplies and material, that also covers any needs that the campuses may have, again, that adds to accelerating student achievement and student learning. So that then goes over to that side. So that is the plan for the 2021 funds going in. And again, those are all currently in place, we're just renewing and rolling, other than staff changes.
This is grant money we get every, every year?
Yes, sir. Yeah, federal money, every year. I'm just gonna stand here for a minute. Rest is mine, too.
Any questions? So we'll move on to action items. Consider approval of T-test appraisers for '21, '22.
Okay, so what you have in board book for action is our Level One Appraisers, which are campus administrators who oversee T-tests on the campus. You'll see that there is one indication, Dusty James, who's our new middle school assistant principal, was not able to attend the summer T-test and AEL training, which is required. She is not able to train until September and October, so her actual certified appraiser won't begin until I receive that in Level One. Level Two Appraisers, that is if a teacher disputes an appraisal and wants someone to do a second evaluation, so they were unhappy with their teacher T-test observation, they disagree with those dimension markings, they can request a Level Two appraisal, and that would be one of us at Level Two that would come in and redo that observation and do a neutral one for them. So that's what that is.
So the recommendation is for those presented and with Dusty James pending her completion of her training. So that would, good act on hers, when she finishes, she's ready to go.
In a motion to approve T-test appraisers for '21, '22.
So moved.
Segmented by Robert. All in favor? I approve. Approval of T-test appraisal calendar for '21.
Okay, this is the same appraisal calendar that was presented to you the year before the only changes dates. So this is T-test, the evaluation system. We do have timelines that we have to stay within, within six weeks of this, 10 days before this, and so this is a breakdown of all teachers that are appraised under a T-test. We do have teachers that have the option to opt-out waiver of formal appraisal based on our board policy, so we will have some teachers that are going to opt-out this year. So we kind of do a rotation on those. So that is what we're looking at for this year.
The motion to approve the T-test appraisal calendar for '22. Motion made by Robert, segmented by Linda. All in favor? I approve.
Thank you.
And consider approval of T-test appraisal calendar for '21, '22.
So the calendar before you, this is the Texas Principal Evaluation System. And so again, just like the T-test side, and principals are actually running under a brand-new rubric this year. We did kind of a soft rollout, we did an overview, they did a little update 2020 on the principal evaluation rubric that is moving. And the main difference is honestly, is it is much more focused on instructional leadership and strategic planning. Those were the huge shifts, as well as kind of making that rubric a little bit more specific. Some of these rubrics get very vague and you're like, it's open for interpretation, which is why it gets all over the place. This one is much more specific, and so we will roll under this calendar with principals and assistant principals for this year.
They get to opt-out on this one?
No opt-out on this one. No opt-out on this one.
All right, good. And make a motion to approve the appraisal calendar for principals for '21, '22. Motion by Scott, segmented by Linda. All in favor? I approve.
Thank you.
All right. Approval of Student Code of Conduct for '21, '22.
So what you have in board book is the CASB template of the Student Code of Conduct that is released to school districts every school year. So what we do is we look at our previous, update the wording in there. So we're coming directly off of that, and I will tell you, out of this 87th legislative session, we have had some changes to that Student Code of Conduct, so I'm gonna be just some highlights, just so that you know, because normally if it's Student Code of Conduct, it's discipline and you're getting a call because principals aren't usually making somebody unhappy. So just to let you know, the major changes, they went in, and clearly it was under sexual abuse of young children, they've added a disabled individual. You saw a lot of legislative updates and bills coming in, through special education, support of students with disabilities, and also protecting disabled individuals. So what you have is some wording change on that under the sexual abuse side of that. The other one, House Bill 785, they added a lot more wording under discipline management techniques for students with disabilities because as we know, sometimes their disability does impact how they're acting in the discipline side. So they have given us a little bit more guidance to disciplinary placement if it's students with disability. The other arm was firearm silencers. They did still a little change on that with firearm silencer and suppressors. Apparently that's a hip thing to do at the high school, is make those. So they had to clean that up, so they removed it from the list of, or given it, I'm sorry.
Oh, that sounds familiar, Mr. Glover, we've had a lot of those.
Never seen one. Not yet.
So luckily, under that, Senate Bill 240A also expanded the definition of e-cigarette, so it now includes assumable liquid solution or other material aerosolized or vaporized during the use of an e-sig. So as you know, vaping is a big issue, so they've just now keep extending that. The other one that came about was they have really kind of cracked down on the offense of harassment. David's Law, which came out in 1617, actually that legislative session, we had a young boy that committed suicide because of the cyberbullying that was happening, and so we know that that is a huge issue. And so what they've actually done is expanded the offense of harassment to include social media platform, repeated electronic communications that are reasonably likely to cause emotional distress, abuse, or torment to another person unless the communication is made in connection with a matter of public concern. And so again, because most of the harassment that's taking place with young children is on social media platforms, and so they've just extended that. That also gives administrators, because it's under harassment, harassment is considered a offensive Student Code of Conduct, which allows the administration to determine disciplinary action. So they can look at mitigating factors, it's not locking us into you have to handle it this way, they can look at a lot of different factors to make the determination on appropriate placement based on the offenses. So that one came out, and those were really the big hits. One that I did want to bring up that comes up, they expanded academic dishonesty, really more expanded the definition of plagiarism on that because we do have students happening on that. They spotlighted the corporal punishment to remind on that unless a student or parent, student's parent guardian opts out, that is an annual statement requirement to opt-out of corporal punishment. So again, that was an impact of that. If we have kids pull the fire alarm or do a terroristic threat or threaten the school, that is actually, they have become pretty severe on that. That could actually be a mandatory placement up to one year because it's considered a terroristic threat, or expulsion up to one year. Second year.
Yeah.
So. Not elementary, no, right?
Not elementary. Because that's where it happens. The other thing, and I know that because I handle this a lot at Level Two, that comes up with parents, and just, I just want to just spotlight it because it is in our Code of Conduct, is the consideration of mitigating factors. That was really a change when restorative practice came about. You know, used to, even when I was a high school teacher, it was like a zero tolerance, here's your chart, and it's, if you do this, this is a punishment, period. Didn't matter who you were, what you did, or who you knew. The state really pushed out against that and has really kind of tied our hands to doing what I consider a one-and-done. And they focus on the mitigating factors. So if you have students that have kind of gone and committed the same offense, if you have a student that has a repeated disciplinary history, six write-ups, you've got things going on, and you have a student who's never been in trouble ever, and this is their first offense and they just did a stupid thing, you should not be treating them the same way. And so that is really what that comes down to. Now, some parents hate that and some parents love that. Some parents, it's like, that makes it muddy. Because now, why didn't my kid get this punishment? I will tell you, that's the call that the administrators get, that's the call I get. Well, so-and-so got ISS and my kid's sitting in DAP, that's not fair. Well, your kid had 10 write-ups and has been in ISS four times this year. This kid has had nothing in four years of education on this campus. So that is the hardest thing because we are, we have on law that we have to look at intent, self-defense, history, disciplinary history, has there been issues? We have to then judge that. So I just wanted to spotlight that because I know you guys do get those questions or complaints often if we have a little snap in the cavity. So that's it.
Thank you.
You are welcome.
And we need a motion to approve the Student Code of Conduct for '21, '22.
So moved.
Motion by Robert, segmented by Robert. All in favor? I approve. And last action item, consider approval of agreement for the purchase of attendance credit and the delegate contractual authority to supply attendance obligated member as the chapter 40.
Okay, so we again got the letter, the same letter we got last year stating that basically we're kind of right there, as we already know, we're kind of on the fence, as Ms. Pam shared with us at our budget hearing back a couple weeks ago. Enrollment continues to go down and values continue to go up, which is probably gonna drop us back into that situation, but because we are right there close, we are required to do this. It is the agreement we have chosen as we do in the past, if we're not supposed to be here, to exercise option three, purchase attendance credit from the state and just hold back from it. So that is what we've done in the past, what we'll continue to do moving forward. Hopefully, our enrollment goes up and this is not something we want to deal with anyway, but we have to have it approved.
Do we know how much the holdback is?
Zero as of right now.
Zero as of right now.
Zero, correct.
But this is just preventative.
Correct.
Okay. I have made a motion to approve the purchase of attendance credits and delegate contractual authority to supply attendance obligated member as the chapter 40. I have a motion to approve the purchase of attendance credits and delegated contractual authority to supplement to obligate number in chapter 49. I'm looking at motion. Motion made by Sky, seconded by Linda. All in favor? Five-o.
Thank you.
All right, it's into the action items, move on to personnel report.
Just had three new hires, so, for you to acknowledge, Jacob Mooney, the new history teacher at high school and coach, Robert Chee, the new middle school assistant manager, and Christian Vlad will be the last additional teacher-coach at the high school.
Pretty well fully staffed.
That makes us fully staffed as of right now, correct?
Set for two eights. Only three has an A, and middle school has an A.
Yeah, we're not sitting here as solid as Houston I C, you're looking for 700.
Wow.
Thankfully, we don't have addition.
No resignations?
No resignations. No, sir. Thanks, Alan. And now, unless you may, unless there's something from personnel statement, we just want to make a decision.